Okay, it says it's streaming on like on YouTube, but I didn't get a thumbs up. So we're gonna go ahead. Call to order the Oregon Board of Education meeting of November seventeenth. It is on YouTube and we will have the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. May we have a roll call? Mrs. Ruth?
Certainly. Mr. Shea. Mr. Kennedy's not here. Mrs. Miller? She's on the phone. Mrs. Molnar?
Here.
And Mr. Zvisky?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion please to adopt the agenda as written.
Don't move.
Second. Our second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky? And Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. We're deferring staff and community recognition so we can get everyone back together again. Is there any public participation? Mr. Gregory, do you have anything? Okay. Please be advised, the meeting is audiotaped and will be available on the district website. Moving to the treasures report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Molnar. Starting with the last part of it. The first item I want to address is the updated appropriation measure, which was emailed out to all of you along with my treasures report. Minor adjustments to the general fund mostly to reflect the updated five-year forecast. And the other thing is the 499s, the the 499 is the special grants from the state. I had to add in this psychol- the psychology and the bus purchase. We have two grants there, so those weren't all in there. And we also received a since the final expenditure reports are done, we did receive a little bit more in Title I as a carryover. So those are the modest adjustments. I just wanted you aware of them. Before I get into five-year forecast, I did get some good news. I think it's good news for the taxpayers. Our bond mileage will be going down. It's modest, but from 4.35 to 4.15. So it's modest, I understand, but I always like it when that should be our savings for our taxpayers, which is always a good thing. So the five-year forecast, I just was going to, because of the way we're doing meetings, going to go through some of the highlights. The few items that were adjusted, the revenues were increased. We do not have the actual valuations yet from the county auditor's office. I was told they have not been certified by the state Ohio, and so they wouldn't release them. So I used the estimate that the county auditor had done as part of the annual budget process. I did for future years because he did give me one tidbit that our utility properties did increase about 1.8 million, and that's actually a true increase for us. So you'll see in the future years after 2021, you will see that there's like a $50,000 a year increase. So that's modest, but it's, you know, it's going in the right direction. Foundation, it's still based on last year's COVID adjustment. It's flatlined, if not slightly down. And then moving forward, we were told originally to slowly bring it back up to 2018, 19 levels, which is two years ago. So you know, it's fairly flat, as you can see. And there's really no basis to increase it at this point, based on the state budget and the lack of word from that. Tangible personal property tax replacement, you know, the good news, bad news scenario where the good news is our mileage is going, our valuations are going up. The bad news is that that means that the amount we're receiving for tangible personal property tax replacements will be reduced even faster because they take five minutes of a mill. So, so that has been adjusted as well. The one thing that's made a big difference for us is we did receive a dividend from the Bureau of Workers' Comp. We received the first payment, but all told, we're supposed to receive around 628,000, which is really almost one and a quarter mil. So that's really very nice. Just yesterday, I'd originally heard that it could be posted as a receipt, as a dividend. However, then Auditor State came back and said, yeah, no, that's not going to work. We're going to have to show it as a refund of a prior year expense again. So it's a little different location than I originally gave it to the finance committee when we reviewed this, but it doesn't change the actual bottom line. But I I didn't want you to have questions about that. Expense adjusted, they were adjusted to reflect the reductions we made at the beginning of school year. And, you know, we did make $2 million in reductions, which kept us off the fall ballot and actually has stabilized us for further, along with the increases. Recap, the 2 million in reductions has helped us along with the COVID payments. I mean, we've received substantial another mil at least in COVID payments. The workers' comp dividend, that's another, you know, so it's over a million dollars there. The additional utility property dis- valuation helps us. So as you can see on the graph on the back, yes, we are, we'll probably be about a break even this year. And then we will begin spending more than we're taking in, meaning that we'll be beginning depleting our cash balances. But our cash balances are not going to be in horrible trouble until 2025. So we got a little bit of time to see what happens with this pandemic and how we all work out. I just wanted to touch on something that's going on at the state level, the fair school funding plan. Just touch on it. There's been a panel of superintendents and treasurers for the last three years trying to come up with a transparent and understandable funding formula. And they feel it's ready to push forward through the legislature. They're trying to get it in before December, so we'll see how that goes. I believe Hal has signed on. I know I've signed on to the testimony that was going in front of the legislatures, I think. And they're asking us to please write our legislators, et cetera. It's important to note that currently there is no state funding formula. There hasn't been one since fiscal year 1819. We've been stuck in what we call residual budgeting, meaning this is how much money the state has, and therefore you get this amount. And before that, most districts, including us, were guaranteed or capped districts, meaning you just get a certain amount. We aren't on the schedule of any, we aren't on any kind of formula at all. So very few, when we did have a formula, we're actually utilizing it. So this is a very serious issue for districts. There's a lack of ability to frankly, plan. There's some positive things. One thing is that the, I mean, there's still a state and a local responsibility for, for the funding, but there is a little bit more of a leaning or weight put to the actual income of a community versus just everything about valuation. And I think that's very important because just because we have high valuations does not mean that our taxpayers feel that they can afford another tax levy. So I do think it's very important. The basic premise is that they create a base cost, and then from them on, then on, the categories add on top of it. So you're addressing the needs of the students. So not sure what's going to come of it. Unfortunately, the, I believe it's the Senate leader has his own plan, and he also is pushing heavily for additional monies for the scholarship programs that come out of our budget. So we'll see what happens at the state level, but it is a solid plan, but we'll see what comes of it. So unless there are any questions, that is the forecast. I certainly sent everything out to you guys. So if you have questions, don't hesitate.
Any questions? Okay, let's have a motion to accept the treasures report.
Don't move.
Second. Heather, Heather, use the second. You couldn't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you, Heather.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller? Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy? Oh, he's not, duh. And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Sorry about that. I can't hear.
Okay, any need for an executive session? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing non-emotion is needed to vote on the consent agenda.
Don't move.
Second. Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller? Mr. Zvisky?
He dropped off.
Oh, we lost him? Okay. And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Shea?
I already said him.
I said yes.
Yeah. I got everybody but Mr. Zvisky who had to drop off.
Okay, well, I guess we, shall we move ahead? I guess.
Yeah, it's passes, but.
Okay, yeah. Under new business of the indoor track club, I need a motion to approve the recognition of the indoor track club at Clay High School for the 2021 school year. There is no cost to the district. This, we've done this for several years. Now you have a motion, please? Second.
Sergeant.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item B, interpreter service. We need a motion to enter into agreements with the following. Us together interpreting services to provide interpreters for our non-English speaking students to take the OST and DSC interpreting services to provide for an interpreter for a high school student in the amount of $55 per hour during regular business hours, $65 per hour after business hours, holidays and weekends, and $65 for last-minute assignments, plus mileage of .505 if it's more than 25 miles. Now you have a motion, please?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item C under new business is the substitute teacher compensation. We need a motion to increase compensation for substitute teachers from $100 per day to $125 per day, effective November 13th, 2020 through May 28th, 2021. This rate will be reviewed prior to the 2122 school year. Now you have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller? And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Um, our school fees is going to, that's going to come to two motions. The first motion is to resend the 2021 school fee schedule that we had approved in the spring. Now you have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item E is the actual adjustment fees for the 2021 school year. We need a motion to adjust those fees, please?
Don't move.
A second. Discussion.
Yeah, this, in the finance committee, we took the recommendations of Hal and Jane by looking at this, and a lot of this is based on the COVID. The amount of time that the students were actually active in these events, and this seemed to be the most fair that we could do, considering the situation that we're in.
May I add one thing?
Yes, you may.
The only thing I would add is that we are also using, we got the workers' comp dividend of like 116,000 or something, and we thought we could help the parents out with this. It's more than what we would have normally collected from those fees. So we felt it was a way to help out parents as well, just this one year.
And it's based on a percentage of, for instance, the number of football games or that the cheerleaders actually cheered at. It's based on the percentage of games that they actually cheered. Mr. Gregory, do you have anything further you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, just, just so that everyone knows, we did eliminate the general fees for this year across the board, except for the specific ones. So essentially, we kept all the career tech fees because those programs are going to be moving forward regardless of what model we're in. And we did adjust the sports fees for the fall season. So we're going to look at each season kind of in sections. So we'll, we'll go ahead and do a review of the fall season. I'm sorry, the winter season at the conclusion of the winter season, once we know, you know, what actually occurred and what actually was able to, to play out. So, and that's really it. I appreciate the board really taking a an honest look at, you know, what we consider fair. I mean, school fees are needed by the district, but we also understand at this point in time that it's very difficult for our families, especially if those kids were not able to take advantage of some of the sports and those types of things. So, so again, we won't be adjusting any of the other fees except the sports fees moving forward.
Oh, one more point. I'm sorry. We will be refunding anybody that has already paid their school fees. Please give us a chance to organize this and as easily as we can, but we will be refunding fees already paid because we did have a third of them already paid. So those will be coming back.
And maybe just to further explain career tech, those are for the actual things that those students keep for themselves. They're not school equipment. It's things that they use in their courses. So, um, that's any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Shea? Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Okay, item F under new business is the disposal of equipment and materials. We need a motion to dispose of a Gen X model 4316 and a drill press and an old piano at Eisenhower. Now you have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Hey.
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Thank you. And on to the superintendent. Are you going to give us a report this evening?
I, I really don't have a lengthy report. If I could just maybe hold off, once we go through old business and committee report, when we get into board discussion, if that's okay, we could talk just more about our instructional models, maybe, you know, brainstorm ideas and get, get your opinions on what's next.
Okay, thank you. Old business. Item A policies, the following policies were presented for their first reading on October 20th and are now being recommended for adoption. There are quite a number of them. May I have a motion to adopt them, please?
Don't move.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller? And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Okay, then we're moving on to committee report finance. Mr. Shea, do you have anything further this evening?
Basically, everything, we went over Jane's five-year forecast, and we went over the refunds that we did. And other than that, what that took up most part of our finance committee meeting the other day.
Capital improvement is not here. Policy personnel, we just adopted some new policies, academic, legislative.
Nothing.
Student achievement.
I have something that I wanted to highlight. I don't know if any of you saw on 13 ABC, but it was, it ran a couple of times this weekend on Olivia Kessling. She's the founder of Warm Hearts Foundation. She was given the 2020 Award for Outstanding Youth and Philanthropy, an award for generosity, and that was highlighted a couple of times throughout the weekend, and I just want to say congratulations to her.
And she's an Eisenhower student, correct?
Correct.
How did I?
And they did a really nice piece on her.
Good. Okay. Board discussion. Current instructional plan versus hybrid versus remote. Mr. Gregory, would you like to lead?
Again, I, I just want to kind of, you know, have, have a brief public discussion about where we're headed and just be, you know, we've been upfront about everything we've been trying to attempt to do here since we started this whole journey. And none of us know where the journey's headed for sure. But I just thought I'd start off with the statistics as we, as we know them today, related to Oregon City Schools. So really, our students yesterday and today were in remote. As you know, we started remote this week, and we'll be that way at least through the Thanksgiving break. So we have had 15 out of 472 staff members, just to give a percentage, so 15 positive COVID cases in our staff, which is about 3% of our entire workforce that we have. Albeit, 3% sounds like a high number. It's not as high as, as what you're hearing out there in the community. And just to give a comparison related to students, we have had 33 positive cases out of a total of 3,200 kids that are coming to school. That is only 1% of the entire student body that, that we have positive cases for. So although we have 48 total cases between staff, positive cases between staff and students, the percentages are very, very low. So obviously, whatever we're doing is working from the standpoint of spreading positive within our schools, and I attribute that to everything we've put in place. But where it goes sideways and where we've struggled and where all the districts are struggling, you know, today, just a couple more changed plans today. TPS, I think they made some sports announcements about delaying sports. And Washington Loco, just staff members, there were so many staff members out that they're starting remote tomorrow. So they're, they're actually switching it pretty quickly, but I totally understand when, you know, you don't have enough staff in the classrooms and/or bus drivers to drive the buses, and it's actually starting to happen now pretty much across the state and across the country. But just to give you a total overall percent, now we've had in the last four days, a lot of kids come off this list, so our percentages are actually lower than they were last Friday. Because as we find out that, let's say, a sports team, a sports teams are usually put out with a sick athlete. Not a positive athlete necessarily, but a sick athlete. So if those sick athletes come back with a negative test, then those athletes can go back and we can, it can start back up again. So we have, out of the total staff of 472, we, we still have 43 out on quarantine, or 9% of our staff are out. Now that's actually down a little bit because each day they're going to start to come off. And, and the goal of going these two weeks remote is to get these percentages down to close to zero as possible, so that we have a clean slate if and when we come back on, on the 30th. So 9% of our total staff were out or are out. We have 11% of the kids are out at Clay. 11% of the kids are out at Facet. 7% are out at Eisenhower. 13% are out at Coy. 13% are out at Jerusalem. 13% are out at Starr. 5% of kids at Winn and Blackman Center are out, and with an overall rate of 11% that are out district-wide. So in that 11% district-wide is down from 15% where it was Friday. So we had quite a few individuals come off that quarantine isolation list, which is awesome, really due to a negative test. So, but those numbers are very difficult to manage when you start, you know, actually living the experience of, of calling their families and and making sure everyone understands contact tracing, all those types of things. And literally just yesterday, the health department is so overwhelmed that they put all the contact tracing and quarantining onto the districts. So we've been doing it, but many districts have not been doing it, and it is a huge, huge worry and concern at many districts that have not done what we've been doing, thank goodness, because of our nursing staff that, and nursery that have put together a plan. It's overwhelming, but we at least have a plan and it's working well. So I just kind of wanted to start that with where we're at right now in terms of our overall numbers. Again, the positive number of cases isn't that bad in our schools. Schools are not the reason COVID is spreading. I think we've all heard that, but we are a direct impact. And we, you know, those quarantining isolations are a direct impact of all the sick people that are out there. And I don't know if you heard today, but they had to shut down the, the pop-up testing out at the rec center in Toledo early because there were so many people. So if you weren't in line, I think it closed at two. If you weren't in line by, I don't know, 11:30, whenever the tweet came out, you weren't going to get a test today. So getting a test is hard. We are fortunate that Mercy is still supporting us, supporting our staff at least with that Mercy mobile testing team, just so you know that, because we're not doing it for the families. We're hoping that we can get our own pop-up center, but that's even becoming more and more difficult now that we're just struggling or they are struggling getting the number of tests in. Okay, so where do we stand right now? We, we made a decision, and thank you for the support to, to go remote these couple of weeks to see if we can get, you know, our quarantine numbers down. The, at least my thought, my goal right now is to, to bring back our kids on Monday, the 30th, in the hybrid model seven through 12, and, and four, four days a week at the K through six level. Couple of things that will influence that decision. I think one is if the health department comes out with a directive or an order that, that doesn't allow that to happen. There is, my understanding is there's a meeting on Thursday morning, a health department board meeting, that something I believe is going to come out of that meeting. Don't know if it's going to be another recommendation or some kind of order. I know we meet with Eric, the health commissioner, each Thursday, and we have strongly recommended to him that a recommendation is really not even worth its weight, because if it's just a recommendation, districts are going to continue to do what, wherever the districts are at within their own process. And, and I understand that because frankly, we all want to get our kids back in school because the remote learning is very, very difficult for kids. And we know that. We have more Fs, top to bottom, by far exponentially more than we've ever had since I've been in the district, and that's been 18 years. And, and that's a direct reflection of how difficult it is for these kids to, to learn from a remote setting and all these disjointed educational models that we keep throwing them into. And so, you know, we're going to have to dig ourselves out of that somehow. I don't know the answer. Some kids are doing it on their own. Others are trying. It's just difficult, you know, but there's so many family influences that go with that. So that's, that's the plan. Now, in terms of going all in, again, I personally don't have any particular timetable in mind that I would recommend to the board to bring kids back five days a week, K through 12, like we were attempting to do. I just don't think it's feasible with the amount of quarantining and isolation that's happening. We just can't manage it, let alone keep our staffing levels. So I'd just like to hear what the board has to say. I promised the community that if we were going to make a change for the 30th, that we would let everyone know by next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow. I figured we'd have a little bit more information if there were a mandate of any kind. I really don't believe the governor is going to make a mandate. I listened to him again today. I mean, maybe down the road he will, but I don't think it'll be before Thanksgiving. I think he would do, it would be, you know, post Thanksgiving and, and see if we have this increase in numbers after Thanksgiving, although I don't know how it can go up more. I mean, it just continues to go up. I mean, I don't, I don't know if Thanksgiving's really going to make a measurable difference or not, because it's going up without masks or without a holiday season, but.
How do you, how do you think that when we're in hybrid, as opposed to virtual, that when students are quarantined, because our teachers are actually teaching for four days that week?
Yep.
Are the students that are quarantined getting a good quality education, or is that just paper assignments that they're going to have to turn in and, and do in that process?
Yeah, good question, Mike. I think the, the goal is that those kids will have instruction two days a week, and, and part of the reason we did the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday idea is at least we would have, you know, two touches within the week that are you know, two touches within the week that are, you know, a little bit spread out, but not too far spread out versus the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and have a whole bunch of days in between. But that is a struggle. Uh, assignments are being given for those kids. Now, Wednesday is the SAT day and a day that those kids can connect with their teachers. That's really the primary, primary time. That's why we switched from five days to four days at the elementary because of the quarantine and isolated kids. So they had a day, teachers had a day to interact with those, those kids or those families somehow. Hybrid is by far the most difficult model. Let me put it this way. It is, is the most difficult model for the teachers because they are having to balance both models, you know, when you're in hybrid, right? You're, you're in-person and you're remote learning and, uh, but it is the, it is the only way we can keep kids in school because we can, uh, we can get a lot more distancing in the classrooms and have a lot more or a lot less, uh, mandated, uh, quarantines because what we do now is a sick kid positive case can take out twenty-five to thirty to forty kids. When we're in a hybrid, we hope it takes out far less because there's going to be a heck of a lot more distance in the classroom, and that's what it's all about. It's not that when we were all in, kids were getting sicker. They, the trans, the virus was not transmitting in our schools. We had a couple of cases that we believe it could have happened. We don't have absolute proof, but it, logic would tell you that it was transmitted. Uh, but we're talking like four situations. And two of those were staff, or a couple of those were staff, uh, and a couple were kids. So, oh, and that's the, that's the case all over the state and all over the, the, the country is it's not transmitting in schools, but the rules mandate that we kick all these kids out of school when they are within six feet of someone who's been positive. And you go back twen- forty-eight hours. So let's say it's a, we find out on a Wednesday, we got a contact trace then the Monday and Tuesday.
So what should we look at for, um, faculty and bus drivers? Uh, you know, I know you're looking at a percentage, but when it's, when is that cutoff point where we cannot fill the classrooms even with a hybrid?
Yeah.
Do you have an idea on that?
Yeah, fortunately for bus drivers, um, we, uh, we, we made it through those four weeks that we were, uh, with kids and, and just towards the end, we had a couple out. But I think, Dean, we were still able to, to manage all our routes, right? We were never a day without a route.
That's correct.
Yes. Which is good. With teachers, Mike, is we're really, and, and not only at teachers, but our support staff in terms of paraprofessionals, we were extremely low and couldn't find any subs for our paraprofessionals for a lot of our class, special needs classrooms specifically. And then teachers, uh, right, really the last draw was we were down about, gosh, I don't even know, eight to ten teachers that last day of unfill, unfilled positions on top of the thirty positions that were filled. And, and we can continue to piecemeal that. Our, our, our faculty's been wonderful. They've been covering for each other. You know, what we do is we have to have, uh, teachers who have a planning period and then they cover the, you know, and you do that each period of the day and you get through the day. But it's certainly not a high-quality education.
What, do you have like a goal in your mind of a percentage that you think, you know, education is not going to take place when we hit that percentage or close? I mean, just, and not that you have to give me a percentage, but are you, are you got one in your mind that you're kind of?
Well, when we looked at where we were at the end of last week, okay, when we made this decision, and actually, I'm going to bring it up because I took a screenshot. Let me, let me tell you exactly what our... So we were at just about where we're at now. So a lot of staff haven't come off. We were at eight or nine percent, almost pushing now ten percent of our staff. When that many staff are out, we're not doing well. We have too many kids that aren't getting an education and we don't have enough subs. Although tonight you approved some new subs, so thank you for that. But, so that might make a big difference. Uh, we got maybe what, eight to ten, Dean, from, uh, that, that letter we put out. So thank you to the community for, for these folks for stepping up. So I, any, you know, anywhere from this eight to ten percent right now is what, you know, what I felt we couldn't handle. When we have that many out consistently too, you got, you're talking like this is day in and day out. And these teachers are, are getting, uh, ill. Now, not all of them are coming back positive. So I guess if I had to put a number on it right now, we're at nine percent, nine point eleven percent and it'd be hard to run it right now.
Well, thank you. And, and I'm, I'll be honest with you. I, I don't know how we're being as successful as, as we are because, I mean, you're making the statement that the, you know, the health department is giving us suggestions, um, and letting us make the decisions. I know our, our health staff is fabulous, but you're making the decisions and I compliment you that I, I think you've been really doing some very, very good decision-making, um, on behalf of our students and our faculty.
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate that. You know, you never, I, I, I'm, I'm pretty good at saying now, I don't know what's right or what's wrong anymore. I just know what feels right and what feels wrong. And, uh, you know, history will bear that out. So that's really all I, I had. If you guys have, you know, comments, suggestions, you know, feelings, um, you know, let me know, let's hear it.
Well, I would, I would have to agree with how on, you know, where the kids are standing as far as grades are concerned. I know that that is a struggle right now, um, when they're not in the classroom. And of course, we all want our kids to succeed and, and typically, we're, we're so used to seeing them in the, in the grades that they normally achieve. And when they're not doing that, of course, that causes a little bit of concern, um, from a parent's standpoint when you have a kid that normally does not struggle and is struggling. Um, and so I get it. And for those kids that are, that struggle even without this whole situation, I know that that has got to be a huge task to take on. And so, and I, we're not alone, obviously. It's, it's all over the place. Um, but it's just stay in the course and we just support as much as we possibly can in the situation that we're in. But I understand that and the kids, you know, I know they're frustrated. You know, I could speak, uh, from personal experience. They are, you know, mine is struggling. And so just got to get back into a routine, whatever that is, you know, and we just stay the course.
I, I do really feel, and, and I know the, the worry that's out there, but I, I really do feel that we can get through, I mean, again, without a mandate, we can get through the Christmas time in a hybrid fashion. I, I really do believe that. Um, our elementaries really didn't have a problem throughout this whole time with the numbers of quarantine and isolations. I mean, it was handled, but again, they don't have the teams and the large groups, you know what I mean? And they're not going to ten different classes. We really only had one situation at Eisenhower where two classrooms were out. That happened fairly early on. And that's it. We had, uh, individual students that were out or individuals that might put out two or three, but we didn't have any other classes. We haven't had any positives at Star, right? Yes, no positives at all at Star and only one at Coy. And that just came here, uh, uh, after we were out actually, or the last day, Friday. And we've only had four at Jerusalem. So the, the positives really haven't been an issue at the elementaries. And really, the quarantining hasn't really been an issue. And the hybrid seven through twelve will make a big difference with the numbers going out. You know, Nurse Sherry and I talk ten times a day and, you know, we really talked through this. Do you think this will really make a difference? And she, she, she does, and she wants the kids back. You know, she understands the, the value of kids being in school for sure. And it is a lot of work on the nurses, but, uh, but a hybrid's going to really cut down on their work, we hope. But again, things could change for the next two weeks, right? I mean, day-to-day things change, so we're going to be monitoring everything day-to-day.
And, and that's the whole problem. It's almost a day-by-day decision with whatever happens. Because one day, I think we ought to shut this thing down till after Christmas. And then the next day, it's like, no, we can do the hybrid and get through.
I feel your pain. I, 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 I know exactly what you think because, you know, y- you're making big decisions here as a board and all of us together. And, and really, you know, a lot of it's just, you know, what you feel is right. Like I said earlier, I don't know what's right or wrong. People will tell you if you're right or wrong, but, but I got to say, this, this, this remote we just went into, um, our community was fantastic. I only received five emails. I, I've said this period, and that was the very first night, probably within ten minutes of the announcement. So one real negative, one real positive, and three kind of, you know, question, questioning a few things. So overall, you know, overall, it was accepted very, very well.
So I think my next question would be, do you think we need a special board meeting like on the twenty-fifth?
There's no reason we couldn't schedule it and, 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 you know, and, and, uh, cancel it if we don't need it.
That would be the day before Thanksgiving and then, and then you could, um, make your announcement to the public as to what we're really going to do. I, availability by anybody? I know Mr. Kennedy said he's available anytime. I don't know about Mr. Zivski.
We, we could schedule it tonight tentatively, or we could wait and schedule it, you know, uh, at the end of this week or the first of next week, just to see whatever. I mean, if, if we want to tentatively say, hey, make sure your calendar's clear for, um, a six o'clock meeting on the twenty-fifth or earlier, whatever works for the board. And then we could officially decide if we need it like on Monday. Just a thought.
I'm fine on the twenty-fifth, the twenty-fourth, the twenty-sixth, or twenty-sixth is a holiday, so I'm not.
Mrs. Miller, how about you? How's your schedule?
Crazy, but I'm available.
And, and Mr. Kennedy said anytime, uh, during the day or, it's fine with him. And I'm okay, whatever.
Well, we did last, when, or last time we did a special meeting, Wednesday seemed to work good for Jeff. Um, Wednesday would work good for me as, as long as it's six o'clock or five-thirty. So if we want to check with, you know, let's, let's shoot for five or five-thirty, six o'clock.
Five-thirty.
And then.
Yeah.
Five-thirty, yeah.
That's, you're busy.
No, I'm not, no.
No.
I won't have a problem with that, no.
Okay.
We're, our Friday department's starting to go virtual, so we're not going to have drills anymore.
So tentatively, the twenty-fifth at five-thirty?
Yep. Okay.
Okay. And then we can actually, we will, we'll put it down and then we can actually, if we need it, fine. And if we don't, it's okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, is there anything else for the good of the board? The only thing I have to say.
It's been a ride.
Community, stay tuned because it's a day-by-day decision. It's amazing. Never in my whole lifetime of many years did I think this would ever happen. Just amazing to me. Um, all I have then is, uh, Tuesday, December fifteenth, next meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Will the, will those be Zoom? Both of those meetings will be Zoom, right?
I'm a, I'm, that's up to the board. I, I.
It ends December first.
Okay.
But I think.
Twenty-five could be, couldn't it?
Well, I think for sure this Wednesday or if.
Wednesday, yeah.
Okay.
But we'll have to see what the state does, um, to extend virtual meetings for the December meeting.
Uh, good point.
Check with maybe Mr., um, Mr. Hal, could you check with our attorney?
I will, I'll check on that for sure. Yep.
Because I'm, I'm sure that, um, virtual thing ended the first of December.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to end the meeting, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar.
Yes, and thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Be safe.
Stay healthy. Where are your?